Two will call meeting order. Mr. Miller, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Mr. Shaw, board member and president. Mr. Board, has public notice been given?
Yes, it has.
Public comment for Policy 0167.3. Anyone wishing to participate in the period of public comment must be a resident of the Richland School District, a parent or a little guardian of an enrolled district student or an enrolled district student. Speakers are not permitted to make anti-lamentatory comments, use inappropriate language or gestures, attack specific persons, or make a specific person the subject of their remarks. Please see Policy 0167.3 for a complete list of requirements and restrictions. If a person is unable to adhere to these rules, they may be directed to other comments. Mrs. Coleman?
Aye.
Thank you. Two reports. District administrator's report.
Okay, so just a few things, starting off with some dates. Tomorrow is our district-wide annual super-registration. We expect several hundred families and students to come up to our high school here, starting at 1:00 going until 7:00. Online registration has been open now. We've got a wonderful response from our families. I believe a third of our families have already been registered, and that was as of this morning. But then if they need assistance, they can register here tomorrow afternoon. We've got translators, we've got food trucks here. The board is welcome to attend if they want to be present as well. There'll be Jostins, we'll be taking photos, things like that. So, super-registration is here. You may have noticed in your mailbox or with your materials, the 25-26 school district calendars are available. Board members, you've gotten them. Family members during super-registration tomorrow, that will be something that's available to all of our families as well. So, it's got a lot of our high-level, important dates that involve the entire school district. So, again, tomorrow from 1:00 to 7:00, the super-registration up here on the gym end of our high school here. Then you have committee meetings on Wednesday of this week. We will plan on starting Buildings and Property as well as Personnel at 6:00 p.m., and then we will start Policy and Curriculum at 7:00 p.m. And a small correction to that, Buildings and Property is actually starting at 5:30, and they are starting their meeting down at the concession stand. Okay? So, Buildings and Property will start at 5:30 at the concession stand, then transition up here for the rest of their meeting. Personnel will start at 6:00 o'clock, and then both of the second meetings, Policy and Curriculum, will start at 7:00. Okay? Sorry for that. And then, again, just let the board and our public know, district office and our building offices have been on summer hours since about the first week since school got out, which means they're here a little longer Monday through Thursday, and then they get out a little earlier on Friday. Offices close at 11:30. This is the last week that'll take place, and so, starting next week, our, what I would call "normal" hours, will be back in fashion at district office as well as all of our buildings, and that will be from 7:30 to 4:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, excluding holidays, of course. And then, lastly, you may notice as you look around, there's a few less people in the room after you're listening to the folks from Sun Prairie School District and gathering some information that they had, and then in communication with our board president, and we're trying the model where we do not necessarily have to ask another couple of nights per month from our administration. They would not necessarily be present. With that being said, board members, as you look through future agenda items and you're reading through your board material, if there are questions that you have, or if there's information that you really need an administrator present, I'd appreciate it if you'd reach out to me, including Mr. Unbehind in that correspondence, so that we can make sure that those administrators are present for the meeting. Okay? But this will, they put in so many hours with so many different things, from IEPs to TOs to chaperone dances and everything in between, not having them in attendance if they're not needed, I think is something that we can do as a benefit to those folks. But again, if you need them here for any reason, let me and Mr. Unbehind know, so that we can make sure that they are here. That's all I have for tonight. Are there any questions from the board regarding dates or anything? Okay, thank you.
Board member report.
Go ahead. I was just gonna say that I did put this on here. This is not a normal time where this would be on here, but we did have a special meeting, and then I know we had a board member attend a CISA assembly as well, so that's why it's on here at a time where it normally wouldn't be. So, go ahead, Mr. Dowdington, me to cut you off.
Buildings and Property met last Wednesday. We started our, every year, the Buildings and Property Committee walks the buildings, just gets an eye on them to see if there's any needs, updates, whatever may need to happen. We focused on the primary and the intermediate. The primary, obviously, a ton of work there. A lot of the slides were shown in the last meeting. Things are progressing nicely. I think the goals that we've laid out to the public are gonna be met. Some of them might be pretty tight, but I think we're in good shape there. Intermediate, a lot of work has been done there, and after that, we'll tour the facilities here in the staging area, so.
All right. Okay, so I was able to attend the CISA meeting, and I just wanted to review, I sent everyone notes, but I wanted to review some of what was discussed, and quite frankly, you know, it was the speaker that really provided the best notes and probably the most information. All the rest of the meeting was delegations, and that was it. We had no other business, and so, I'm gonna spend a little time talking about what was shared with me, and if you have questions, certainly reach out. Otherwise, I'm here, I'm welcome to give you a call. So, there was a virtual speaker. His name is Greg Trichetta. He's a strategic communication advisor. He has worked in schools before, no longer does, and really, you could tell his passion for the topic because he talked 100 miles an hour. All of my notes came from him, and I only got a little bit of what he said. He went from hard facts to strategies to things to consider to actions and all this, you know, everything in between. And then Jamie Nutter, Dr. Nutter, who was the administrator there in CISA three, he followed up with some similar sentiments, and obviously, he's the one that recruited the speaker. And so, let me just share a little bit about what I learned. So, one of the things that I'm not sure everyone's real aware of, but it is projected that Wisconsin is gonna have their voucher cap removed in '26, '27. And so, the idea is, we need to start planning for that, and it could have pretty tremendous effects on every district, and essentially, one of the things that came from that is, we're gonna end up being competitive. That really wasn't the way public schools were meant to be, but that's really gonna be the reality. And so, he talked a lot about what does competitive look like in kind of this mutual agreement-like scenario, right? Where the people around us and in the neighboring schools are doing the same types of things to make sure that their students stay in their district and don't go somewhere else. And so, I was really, as I was listening, there were some things that first, that just started popping up to me. One, you know, is the innovative thinking that the districts are ready to put into action with some of the charter schools that we have, and so, that was exciting. The other thing, one of, the other thing that I really took from them is, we need to continue, and I think we do a great job of this, Carrie, like an amazing job of this, is really celebrating what makes our schools amazing. And he really wants us to hone in on it, and I couldn't agree more, the little wins, the short ones, and make sure that the short wins include every student and every student's interest, if you will, right? Because families bring their values into the school with the things that their children are interested in, and they're gonna stay if they see those things being elevated and great things happening with the things that they value in their homes. And so, they talked a lot about that, and again, I think that, you know, our social media, our marketing is a great, what a wonderful addition. It's everywhere, it's prideful, and when I walk downtown, when I drive through town, I see it. When I come past a school, I see it. I see it on Facebook, I see it all over the place, and I think that's really fantastic. The other thing that, you know, they talked about was being unique, what makes us unique, something different. And so, you know, we've got a couple of things right now that we're testing out as far as, you know, small programs that might work for our district, and if those work, we grow that, right? It's what would make us more, even more unique. And then, the last thing I wanted to share, and this was one of the things that I think that we've already heard in the last couple of months, but that really is to understand what does the public want? And in order to do that, we have got to get in the face of the public war. And so, you know, just listening to these last couple of board meetings, to all of the speakers, I think what we're learning is, our time needs to be put in, in other places, so that we are connected with our school or the community, and the community can see us bringing that information back and decisions being made based on what the community wants. And, you know, there's more details in here. All of, all of my notes were things that came from him. I did add a couple little comments in there about, you know, some things that resonated with me, like One Hive came to mind when he said, you know, you gotta just take a local and go with it. So, if you have other questions, let me know. Otherwise, I just wanted to reiterate that we're probably up against it a little bit, but I think we're ahead of the curve, so we're gonna be in much better shape than the districts, probably. Any questions? Report.
Thank you for attending that. Report. Student council report.
I think Mr. Culver is here. Good evening. Just go ahead and push the microphone up there so it's green. Thank you.
Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is Kirman Culver, and I am the president of the student council. The council's parliamentarian, David DeDune, is out of town right now, so it'll just be me tonight. One thing that has been brought to the council's attention from the Richland Center Police Department is that this year, homecoming and the light parade overlap once again, and the police have expressed concerns about the homecoming and light parades being only one day apart, as they have to be present for both. Furthermore, it is an inconvenience to students to have to be in the light parade for, like, marching band and then have the homecoming dance on the same night. And this is just something to keep in mind for planning for the next year, to potentially avoid these dates from overlapping. But aside from that, student council is busy with homecoming preparations. We are currently on track and planning to have weekly meetings before school, once the school year begins. We are also planning to have student council members volunteering at super-registration tomorrow, providing child care for families while they handle registration. That's all I have to report for tonight. Does anyone have any questions or concerns? All right, thank you.
Time to minutes. Is there a motion to approve the prior meeting minutes of July 28, 2025?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Billings. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mrs. Sharp. Discussion. Mr. Billings?
Aye.
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 Aye. On to financial items. Approval of statement of cash and invoices. Something you generated.
Recommend action, motion to approve the statement of cash dated August 6, 2025, and approve community first bank general checking account checks number 87452-87473, H8CH number 252603498-25260353620250003, for a net total of $162,774.53. This is for the purpose of general operating costs of the district.
Motion was made by Mr. Miller. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Dowdington. Mr. Bosworth, anything you wanna point out or add?
Yeah, I would say this is generally a smaller dollar amount than you're used to seeing. It's just not a lot. July, August isn't a ton of things going on, but most of these expenses are beginning of the year expenses. There's one larger one on there in the first page. You can see to the city of Richland Center. It's a quarterly payment, a little over $20,000. That's for our community resource officer, and that, that money is technically not Funtend money, that's on ED money, and that's money that's levied on top of the Funtend money. So, it's levied specifically just for community purposes.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mrs. Sharp?
Aye.
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 Aye. 2025-26 budget draft update.
Okay, I'll turn this over to Mr. Bosworth.
Thank you. So, this document, our Personnel Budget Committee has been seeing for the last four, five months as we've figured out some numbers. This is generally speaking, just a comparison from last year to this year. So, as we take a look at just a big picture of what the '25-'26 budget is gonna look like, we try to look at some of the bigger expenses. And just about everything is known at this point, and so, anything that's shown in red, those are expenses that are gonna be bigger than they were last year. And if something is shown in green, those are revenues that are gonna be bigger than they were last year, and then I think I have an orange there, we're anticipating no change in those revenues. So, on the top, you know, we have, these are things that the board has already gone through. They've already approved employee wage increases, generally around 2.95% for all the employees. We went through our health insurance increases. The best we could get was 4%. Dental insurance, we're self-insured, there was really no changes there. We've already gone through seeking new insurance codes for property, workers' comp, liability. Those all came in, those were greater than they were the year before. People transportation, the board had negotiated a specific percentage increase with Cobason, our transportation contractor. That's known. And then, the next box, I Thrive, certified staff, support staff, ROA certified staff. These are some of the things that Ms. Sharp was talking about, some of the alternative programs that the school district is venturing into. So, these are definitely new employee additions that we didn't necessarily have last year. Our projected enrollment count is actually decreasing. You know, that's a, it's a demographic thing. It's not just a Richland thing, it's a Southwest Wisconsin thing. So, a revenue limit, if you remember, is built on our membership that lives in our district, where if they go to public school anywhere, that number is projected to decrease. So, we're not gonna see any increased revenue from that. The open enrollment trends that we're seeing are still trending positive, so we do think that that's gonna bring in some more revenue. There is a revenue limit increase. It's been in the news a few times, you know, when governors did the wordsmithing to make that 325 go a lot of years into the future. Unfortunately, that gets nullified by some other things in the revenue limit worksheet, so we don't really see increased revenue from that. One big change that happened in the budget was the special ed reimbursement rate increased from 30%, roughly, maybe 29%, up into the 40s. So, that will definitely bring in more revenue for our district. That's a nice, it's a nice addition. And then, finally, the last one there. The community approved a four-year non-recurring operation referendum. We're coming into year two of that. First year was 2.3, this year will be 2.4, so that will be an increase of $100,000 in revenue. So, when you do some arithmetic there, you add up those numbers, right now, it shows that our expenses for the '25-'26 school year are probably gonna be a little over $250,000 more than they were last year, and more than our revenues we'll be bringing in, but those are really mainly tied to some of the newer programs and the newer staffing, and the outlook on those programs at this point is pretty positive, and we may wind up, maybe not in one year, but in years two, three, or four, eventually bringing in more revenue than we're expensing out. So, when I show the actual budget at the end of this month, and we see our expenses are projected to be a little bit more than our revenues, it will generally be about that dollar amount, and remember, it's probably those new programs that's causing that. Is there any questions that I could try to help answer?
Consent agenda items. Mrs. Coleman?
Motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Motion to accept the donation of track and field equipment valued at approximately $400 from the family of Claire Haig. Motion to accept the donation of six rolls of colored paper valued at approximately $300 from Penny Wallace Yegandinsky. Motion to accept the resignation of Sarah Nelson, our CPS speech and language pathologist effective July 31, 2025. Motion to accept the resignation of Adam Harlan, our CHS technology education teacher effective August 4, 2025. Motion to approve the 2025-26 Southwest CAP food program vendor agreement as presented. Motion to approve three open enrollment out applications for the 2025-26 school year as presented, and approve one open enrollment in application for the 2025-26 school year.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Ms. Troxell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Miller. Mr. Board, anything you wanna call out or add to?
Yeah, I would just add, I don't, agenda item 7F, the Southwest CAP vendor agreement. Just to let the board know that the cost that is in that contract covers all of the labor and cost of goods, plus the government mandated minimum markup, okay, for, that we have to apply to outside contracts, so that we're not losing any money with that contract, and we're provided by all the rules.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Mr. Dowdington?
Aye.
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 Aye. On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to thank the Claire Haig family and Penny Wallace Yegandinsky for their generous donations, and also extend our best wishes to those who are retiring or resigning, and thank you for your dedication to our school, students, and community. Is there a motion to approve the modified agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Billings. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Ms. Troxell. Discussion. Mr. Miller?
Aye.
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 Aye. On to information and discussion items, district vacancies and appointments.
Okay, there with the orange header, we do have what looks like five or six positions that are still open. We have three of them that are in the interview process. If you didn't check, or if you've got a printed copy, the behavioral tech that is now in the interview process, that we're looking at those technicians for the I Thrive, Special Education Aid, and Director of Operations and Maintenance is in that process as well. We've had the Drug-Free Communities Project Coordinator open for some time now. We're gonna repost that, try to get back to the top of the list, and the different websites that we use, try to generate some interest there. And then, we do have the two vacancies that were just created by the acceptance of the resignation of a speech and language pathologist, as well as the tech ed. Our administration's working diligently to try to get those positions filled. We do believe CISA will be able to assist in an SLP at the primary school. We don't get a person here working for us, but we are in search of a technical education teacher here at our Richland Center High School. And again, then, there below that, under the black, you've got the certified admin, non-exem staff that have been hired throughout, since July 1st, as well as the support staff and co-curricular positions off to the right under the blue header. Any questions from the board regarding the transfers or vacancies or appointments? Okay, thank you.
And to the action items, the Hive Student Handbook.
Okay, while the board has approved most of the student and family handbooks as it relates to the traditional buildings, high school, intermediate school, primary school, we do have a couple of our alt-ed programs that's still in need, some student handbooks. The I Thrive will come to the next board meeting, let's get the final touches on it. But this is for the Hive. And again, the Hive was our ROA, our Richland Online Academy. It was pared down in the '24-'25 school year, just a handful of students, and now has totally taken on a different life. We're now K through 12. We have two in-person facilitators, instructors, probably a better word for that, and so, that's now taking on its new life, and therefore, we've got a new handbook. And so, this has gone through the committee, curriculum, as well as the policy committee. But Dr. Johnson is here tonight. Anything that you wanna point out or add regarding the handbook?
Something that's in this handbook that we may need to look at for it as a district is the AI language, so we might maybe have a look at that at some point. We utilized several virtual schools, as well as our own high school handbook to help craft this, so the language in it isn't any different than what other schools have. It's just, it's more about what we're offering in our building and guides that with the language we have in our handbook, so really, that's really the only difference for the most part, is the AI language.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Any questions from the board? I know this went to two different committees. If committees chairs or members want to add anything, feel free to jump in, otherwise I'll turn it back over to Mr. Unbehind.
Is there a motion to approve the 2025-26 Hive Student and Parent Handbook as presented?
So moved.
Motion made by Mrs. Sharp. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Thompson. Discussion. Mrs. Thompson?
Aye.
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 On to 10B, change in director position.
Okay, you saw in Agenda Item 9A, under the district transfer, vacancies and appointments, that we've had a director of maintenance and operations vacancy open. We had that posted, and we had several candidates. We interviewed some of those candidates, and to be clean, quite clear to the folks on the interview committee, specifically to Mr. Bosworth and myself, and I know Mr. Jones is here, so I'm sorry for speaking well of him, but it is quite evident that it would be nearly impossible to replace someone with 47 years of history and experience in our buildings that Mr. Jones has, and so... And so we had candidates that had some very good knowledge in one area or another, but not necessarily one that has all the knowledge that certainly that Brian has, that we feel would be successful in a combined position. And so the proposal here is that we split that Director of Maintenance and Operations position into two director positions, one Director of Maintenance that will particularly handle the fixing of things, the things that run our building, and one of the operation, which will mostly be around what our building looks like, grounds, custodial, those kinds of things. It's at a very high level, you'll see that Mr. Bosworth has a few examples in there as well. And to split that out, and we believe we can do that completely budget neutral by changing some of the positions around so that it won't necessarily be any kind of a budget add. And with that, we think we can get two people that will be very successful in the proposed positions and take advantage of their strengths. That's the ask, Mr. Bosworth, anything that you'd like to add that I missed there? Questions from the board?
Is there a motion to approve the creation of the Director of Operations and the Director of Maintenance positions?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Ms. Troxell, is there a second?
One second.
Second, Mrs. Thompson, discussion. Ms. Troxell?
Aye.
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 10C, the McKinstry Consultant for Asset Management.
Okay, I think I'm just going to turn this right over to Mr. Bosworth for some background and then I believe we've got some gentlemen here.
Yes, thank you. So Chris and Tyler are here and they're going to present in just a couple of minutes for you and show you some things. But I think I'll start by just giving a little bit of background. In the spring, I was at a Wisconsin Business Official Conference and some members of McKinstry were there presenting along with some school districts who currently work with McKinstry, some superintendents, business officials, Director of Operations, those sorts of individuals. And they were showing what McKinstry can do for school districts to take stock of all of our assets and plan for the future. And it was, I was really impressed with what they're able to offer. So I came back and I explained it to Mr. Board and Mr. Jones and Mark Knoll, and they were definitely intrigued as well. So we met with McKinstry and then they came and presented to our Building and Property Committee. And here tonight, they could speak to it as well, but they liked what they saw and voted to bring it now to the full board. And just, I think when these guys show you some of the software that they have of some similar sized districts, you'll really appreciate what it can do. But we have a long-term plan, but to be frank, it's mainly in Brian's head, and that's a compliment. And it's also on some paper and a spreadsheet that we kind of look at once a year as part of the Fund 46 requirements. And when you see this, it really helps bring this kind of thing to light and it will help us make decisions, specific decisions inside of one year when we need to compare, should we spend money on this asset or should we spend money on something else that's now showing it has more need? And it will help us plan for the future, especially as the four-year operational referendum not recurring is going to sunset. This would give us an opportunity to give some real numbers to our community and say, this is why we're asking for this dollar amount because we feel like we have these things that are going to need to be fixed in the next five to 10 years. So with that, Chris, Tyler, you want to come up and show what you have there? In your board document there, you do have a short slide presentation that will show some website stuff as well.
Okay, thank you for having us. My name is Tyler Zastrowlik. Mr. Bosworth mentioned, I'm with McKinstry. With me today, Chris.
I'm Chris Jones. Good evening, folks.
I'm going to jump right in and show you what the end result of our potential work with the district could look like. This is a similar district that we work with. This is Edgerton School District, four schools, very similar in size to what you all have here. What I'm showing you is this reveal dashboard. It is a website that you can go to from any browser, anywhere with internet access. And what it does is displays data in a way to visually understand it and help you make decisions. I'm going to just go full screen so you can see maybe a bit better. But what you're seeing here is the overview module that is comparing each of the four schools at this district to one another based on a certain metric. Each of those four schools are represented by a PIN and the color of the PIN shows how they're doing against that metric. The metric that we use oftentimes is a facility condition index, so a ratio of how much known capital cost is needed over a time period versus the cost to replace the building in its entirety. So really quick snapshot, very high level, just trying to get a feel for where your buildings compare to one another. Here in the capital planning module is where some more of the granular data lives. So as Mr. Bosworth mentioned, this is an asset management tool. What you're seeing here is that over a 10-year time period for this district, across their four buildings, there were 284 assets that either our staff surveyed the facilities and felt needed to be replaced in that 10 years, or we received information from the district and claiming that these assets needed to be replaced. You're going to see all of those 284 assets down here, which totaled up to about $22 million over that 10-year timeframe. But you're going to see them all down here in the heat map. So the red boxes indicate assets that are high priority, the green smaller ones are lower priority. And when you click on one of these, you can find some more information. So in this situation, our team of engineers were on site and assessed this heat exchanger. It was installed in 1999, there's some information there, giving it a book value of life remaining versus our engineering opinion of life remaining, a replacement cost estimate, and all sorts of detail. But the reason that this asset was shown to be the most high priority was because of how it rated on these five impact scores. So these are all one through five, and these can be customized to the certain district. But this district chose the impact this asset has on operations, you know, a boiler going out in wintertime is a high impact. Energy impact, how much energy does the asset consume? All of those can be used here to help come up with that total priority score. And you're going to see that the assets down here in the green are going to have a much lower score. So all of the assets across the district are on one common criteria, so you can kind of use some data and math to help make your decisions in terms of what to prioritize. Moving forward with all of these assets, based on how long they have to last and what they're going to cost to replace, you can start projecting out your year-over-year capital needs to replace them. So the shape of this graph here can help you make those longer-term decisions about doing things like using Fund 46 or just planning your capital in a way that is going to be most advantageous to the district. There's a tool in here that lets you put in a certain dollar value to prioritize, or to prioritize which assets were to be covered in that year, so in 2025, if we had a million dollars, it's going to use those priority scores to prioritize these one, two, three, four, five, six assets here that are the highest credit count. So many different tools to use data to your benefit. The last example I'll show you is if you want to get detailed on one building, maybe I'll show an elementary school. You can now filter down the data set and see only those assets at that school. This can be used when you're talking with school principals or a building engineer to kind of do a little bit of a snapshot and a deeper dive. But the idea here is that it's an accessible tool and even that the district can use to go into and see where your assets are at and help make longer-term planning decisions.
Okay, there were several options that were presented to the Building and Properties Group. I believe the recommended option is the Option 1, Direct Purchase, and we're representing that in a comprehensive scope. So not only does this scope capture traditional mechanical, electrical plumbing, building envelope assets, based on input from the committee, they saw an opportunity and wish to move forward to do more comprehensive, include assets like IT equipment, shop equipment, fleet vehicles, and interior finishes. So it's going to capture, the more data you can use with our system, the more accurate and more robust your capital planning is going to be. Along with that, there is a finance option if you wish to pay that over several different We also included an option that's a reduced scope. So this represents not the extra categories like the shop equipment, the IT equipment, fleet vehicles, and so on. It's just more traditional mechanical, electrical plumbing. So you can see the costs that are associated with that. And then lastly, here is a look at the districts that we're currently working with, with the exact same tools and software and engineering expertise that Tyler just demonstrated for you. And this is a representation of mostly Wisconsin and a few Illinois districts that we're Questions?
So what your role is then is, if I'm understanding correctly, purely to gauge and time out when different pieces are going to need to be replaced, repaired, when money is going to be spent?
Yeah, time out, time out as well as provide cost estimates.
And do you do anything as far as the, compared to taxes, the bidding out of the different repairs, those kinds of things? Or is it purely this format that it's, okay, this is what you need to do and getting up support?
We do have, so capital planning support is part of our service. Once the data is collected, analyzed, and built out in that heat map that you saw the example of, we will work with district staff and the two new directors and their teams to actually plan, you know, like if these assets fail, kids aren't coming to school. So we will write scopes of work to give to you, but then you can dip that out to whoever you want, what contractors you want. So we're not doing the work, we're just your consultant that's gathering the data and leveraging our expertise on your behalf.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
How does the heat map work on fix versus replace those numbers that are shown?
Sure. For different assets, they might have a certain strategy, we'll call it. So for something like some brick walls, you're not going to replace the brick walls, but you may tuck point them, so that might be a repair estimate, and that will be dictated within the reveal platform. Or other assets like maybe an exhaust fan, that's going to be a full replacement cost.
Sure. And then follow-up, since the building and property, how do you handle things that are assets but not assets? Painting, concrete, hard surface areas, things like that?
Sure, we put together a pretty detailed scope matrix with Mr. Bosworth as well as Mr. Jones to kind of weed out what is something to plan for, which may be more of an operational day-to-day maintenance item. Typically, it's a dollar value that we use as kind of a threshold versus kind of how detailed is too detailed. But in some cases, for example, carpeting, that would be included in this case, it's a lot of square footage, the cost can add up. Does that answer your question?
Absolutely. Maybe the board and John jumped in here, so Option 1 on page 2 of this PDF is that comprehensive plan, this was the plan that the building and property looked at. Year 1 and setup would come at a cost of just under $100,000 and the ongoing cost of about $15,000. The $100,000 is reprimanded expense eligible, okay? So, I hope it be without, with the reprimanded savings, unused contingencies, or bond proceeds, which, you know, bond proceeds haven't been touched yet. Building and property, we're going to have a school on Wednesday. Even if that does eat up contingencies, the money should be there from bond proceeds. And then after that, the subsequent years, the ongoing cost is something that the budget can handle. The budget can handle $100,000 upfront cost, the maintenance and operation and/or operation, but it certainly could handle the $15,000 cost. Is that accurate, John?
Yes.
So just looking forward, years four, five, six, is there a new contract? How does, what's the next step if we decide that after year three that, yep, this is great, we want to continue doing it? Is it renegotiated? How does that process work?
So beyond year three, we would recommend budgeting for a similar level of support represented by years two and three, and obviously have it adjust with inflation. But it would be that smaller amount nominal increases, there should be no more heavy lifts, the goal with our approach, this could be one, you know, survey everything that's that year one plus setup. With this approach being data-driven, keeping the database up to date, rich and school districts should never find themselves in a position again where you have to say, hey, when's the last time we had an assessment, we need to hire a consultant to come in? We get this current, we keep it current, we can adjust with inflation, we always have accurate depiction of projects and costs that are the most critical to keep the schools open and kids coming to class.
Similarly, if we would either close a building, acquire a new building, how does that then get incorporated? Because obviously if we're gaining assets, how are those then evaluated in the cost structure for that? And then if we remove assets, does it get adjusted that way as well?
Yeah, we would have to renegotiate something like that, you know, adding existing building, older assets to resurvey that would be a cost associated, just like offloading a building and no longer having to track those assets, that would be a cost reduction.
I would also add too, that having an accurate cost of building replacement, a few of the clients that we worked with had some scenarios where they needed to work at consolidation in certain parts of the district. We're right here with the leverage, this data to take me more of a logical data-driven approach, to have some of those discussions with constituents as opposed to the saying, we think we want to close this school or this school. It's not, this is an objective data-driven approach, hopefully that districts can grow with, but the data can be used, you know, regardless of which direction you're comfortable with.
One more. Since we have about another year worth of work with the referendum money, are we looking at starting this today, essentially? Or is it that we're paying for the entire scope half of the referendum and just we can do the things today that can be evaluated and then once all the referendum work is done, then we'll come back and do those pieces?
Precisely. We do have a phased approach that will incorporate, we do want to use the data from the referendum because those improvements might be due tomorrow or in a year. Five years, 10 years goes pretty quickly, so we want to use that data. So we'll use a combination of both. Tyler talked a little bit more in terms of the timing.
Yeah, we would want to start here shortly here and assess what's going on now with the understanding that there may be areas that are getting touched in future years that we may not want to devote some time to. So we're going to get new, okay, first of all.
So just to be clear, so the motion that we'd be looking for, what we're proposing is Option 1 of the comprehensive plan totaling $128,085.
And the mindset, and I don't want to put words in balls, but the building and property was looking at this, but Brian stepping back a little bit, having a spreadsheet like that was shown on the board for the new maintenance people would be huge.
All right, is there a motion to allocate funds from the 2024 capital referendum to finance the initial investment in McKinstry Consulting Asset Management Service under Option 1, Direct Purchase Strategic Facility Planning? Motion made by Mr. Billings, is there a second?
Second.
Second, and Mr. Dowdner, discussion. Aye?
Aye.
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 Now, the approval of Board Governor's Nala.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, the last four board meetings, the board has heard two presentations from Mr. Strang, our General Legal Counsel, really revolving around best practices for board as it relates to procedure. And then they also heard two board meetings, presentations from what is known as the Evergreen Leadership Group, they do the Schrader, and Shadu Vermuhi. Probably didn't pronounce that correctly, but you know what I'm talking about. And they, as you know, talked to the board quite extensively about what, how the board should governs in their view, and how it is so important, and Ms. Sharp hit on this earlier today, to really gauge what the community is looking for from their public school, and then develop goals and priorities around what the community wants from their public school. And so there's a lot of different layers here. I've kind of just put all of this together into a conversation catalyst for the board to discuss, you know, starting with really how, or do you like the strategic planning idea? Okay? And then, you know, diving into other phases of it. In order to not confabulate all of the different talking points here, maybe we, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Ambiha to just talk about that initial process of, you know, do we want to go through a strategic planning process? There is a proposal from the Evergreen Group, but maybe just get some general dialogue because it's something that the board wants to consider. Go through all of it, or if you want to just take it chunk by chunk, I think that might be a little clearer.
Yeah, sure. I mean, it's all tied together, this whole agenda item. There'll be multiple motions, but it might make more sense to just go right down the line. As far as strategic planning and engaging our community, the first step there would be the Evergreen Leadership folks. They, they're good at this, and they know what they're doing, they can help us and guide us, they do this right the first time. In the meantime, the rest of these things on the agenda items are things that we can do in the interim to develop ourselves as well, as far as restructuring committees, moving committee meetings around, focusing on goals and outcomes. They've got so much to busy work. But yes, I, Mr. Board, I totally agree, probably just walking through this from motion down would make the most sense. And that first motion on here is under the Evergreen Leadership Group, scope of the agenda topic.
Sure. Okay. So this would be letter A under the, I'm sure there are many additional questions, however, here are a few thoughts or suggestions to start the conversation. So there is an attached proposal with the Evergreen Leadership Group doing this work. This would take place, they would facilitate the entire strategic planning process from start to finish, starting in January, and likely continue all the way through June of 2026. With the back half of that, pretty much the last three months, really focusing on the strategic planning process is done with our community, now what are we going to do with that data? And how do we develop goals so that they're in place for, you know, July 1, 2026, or the 26, 26, 27 school year? So they would, they would help facilitate that and help the board all the way through that process. That would come at a cost of $15,000 plus any incurred expenses that they, that they have. So the last time that the district engaged the community in a full strategic planning process was 2017, 18, around that time, and it was done mostly internally. It was a good process. I think we came up with 14 goals, which is really too many to really sink our teeth into and make substantial gain. This would be hiring an outside group to come in and really facilitate the process, engage our community, to really determine what does a public school look like for the public, right? And what does our public want from the public school? So that's really the first part of it. So maybe I'll just stop there.
Are there any questions from board members? I'm assuming that everybody probably re-watched the videos over and over again. Any concerns with moving forward on this, or everybody feel pretty comfortable with getting some guidance from some professionals as we continue to grow and adapt and build in our board governors model that we've already done a pretty good job building, but now we just need a little bit more help to get across that finish line?
Have they, sorry. Has this group done this type of work in other districts? And if they have, who? And do they have references?
Yes, they have. I know several, the ones that I know for sure that I spoke to are Lowdi and Royal. They just recently, I'm from that area, so I've talked to those folks. It was a, it was a good process. And Lowdi, I think that they've referenced and even brought up their website and things like that. We've actually been in the communication with Lowdi School District in many different aspects, this being one of them. So those are the two I've talked to, but I know that they've done this with others as well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Are there other companies, for lack of a better word, that do similar things? And have we explored any other options? Or is it strictly just the folks from our group?
I'm sure there are many other places that do them. I have not explored any of them. We had these folks, thought we'd start to see what the board wanted to do, but yes, I'm sure there are many other groups.
Yeah, this is a reminder, this Evergreen Group is the same as Steve and Brad and Shadu that were here for two of our meetings, so we've already met them once, just in case folks are not putting two and two together. I'm happy.
I like the idea of the strategic planning. The other part of it I'm not in favor of. Our goals are outdated that we've got on a district website, and we do need to update those. Brady, can you clarify which part you moved on?
Their model. We discussed a lot of things, and I think it's important for the public to hear. I think that they're streamlining, there's so much that the information that is important to people isn't getting to them in my, and maybe people just don't care anymore, you know? But I think more, and more information for when you're dealing with a governmental body, the more information, the better. And I think we've done a good job with the leadership of Aaron on pairing down our meetings so they're not running four hours, five hours, six hours. But yeah, I don't agree with how they set things up.
Yeah, I don't think that the goal here, the end goal is to completely model 100% of what they're doing. It's taking some of their ideas and adapting some of them versus jumping in 110% and saying that this is what we're going to do. I think there is value to it, but I also think there's also a lot of value to, there's a lot of things we can probably pare back on and use our time differently on some of the non-value-added things that we currently do today. So as we continue to, you know, ask the tough questions, have the conversations, we'll vet a lot of that stuff out. But I don't think that the goal here is to 100% follow suit with what they're doing. Just, this is more so the strategic planning part, I think that's really important as far as the Evergreen part. This motion, this first motion is just for their help and guidance on the strategic planning part of this and how we engage our communities in the part of the process.
I agree. I think one of the things that I, one thing that makes, I was a little nervous about that too. But I really feel as if, if we do the model that they are presenting here to fidelity, then our community will inform our model. I think their community informs their model. I think our community, what they need, will inform how we create our new working model, where it could be much more like you were saying, more information is maybe what they want about smaller items. And if that's it, then that's what we have to do, right? Because that's our job. If it's something else, then the way this model is presented, then that's how we have to shift, or how we should shift.
Any other discussion on this? Questions, I should say? All right. Is there a motion then to proceed with the strategic planning process using the Evergreen Leadership Group?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Mrs. Sharp, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second, Ms. Traxel, discussion?
Were we looking at anybody else or just strictly with them? Is Mr. Bailey the same?
Right now, we're just, I mean, we had them here to do their presentation, and that's where we landed.
I guess the reality is, we've had the same thing with McKinstry, everybody on the ones who presented that piece of it.
And the feedback that, you know, we went down this road to get the, to do our, our board communications and development, those four-part series, they were brought here because of the feedback solicited from other neighboring school districts on, you know, the successes that they've had and such. So that's where we started. And it's all local.
Mr. Board, when you talked with Lowdi and was it Royal?
Royal.
Royal. What were some of their, the things that they really appreciated about, was it the way the process was organized? Was it the results? Was it all of it? Like, could you just highlight a few of those things?
Yeah, it's hard to highlight just one because I think they were generally pleased with the entire process. Lowdi has been doing this now since, I believe, 2020, and they just continually update their goals and more refine the data that they're looking at and really trying to move the needle that started off at a very high level, is now really pared down into really specific things. Royal, they had, were struggling trying to pass a referendum, and so they brought them in to really get the community involved, and they ended up with, in fact, I think they referenced, I don't know if they mentioned it by name, but the school district was Royal, that they, I mean, Royal's, Alroy is a town of 1,500 people and two communities, you know, Kemble's 800. And the response that they got from the community was really exciting that they had that, so much community involvement, whatever they did, got a lot of community engagement, and then they were able to take that and say, this is what the community really wants. This is not a group of 12 people at the coffee shop. This is, you know, hundreds of people weighing in. I think that's what they really appreciated most from it. They're very early in, you know, carrying out everything. I don't know that they're necessarily shifting governance models, but they did use them to facilitate the strategic planning process.
Thank you.
Any discussion? We have a motion in a second. Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
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 Aye. Back to Mr. Board.
Okay. So again, I'm just looking for some guidance then. So now, okay, we've kind of agreed, we're going to go through the strategic planning process. General timeline will be that that will start in January, and then the Evergreen Group will, Evergreen Leadership Group will help facilitate that. So now I guess my, my question is, what does, what does it look like from where we go from now until then? What does our governance model want to look like? What do we need if we're not ready to make that decision? What do you need in order to make that decision? And then if you're going down that pathway, what can our committees look like? What kind of work can they do to hone in and, you know, be a little deeper in the discussions of what they're having instead of looking at a lot of different things at a shallow level? What kind of things can they focus on if that's the route that you're looking at going? So again, I've got a general timeline that was just kind of thrown out there, doesn't have to look exactly like that, but I guess, you know, give me some direction on where you want this board to go as it relates to what do we do now before the strategic planning session, if anything? And then maybe the last thing before I turn it back over to President Ambiha, you know, they mentioned, this group mentioned that they have a set of policies specifically dedicated for the board, right? They have their EOL policies, they still use those, those are more operational, that the administration lives in daily. Obviously, the board still has some say over those things, but one of the thoughts was, and I've emailed these folks to say, can we get a copy of what does, what do those look like? What does those policies look like? One thought is, you know, could the policy committee start taking those and not making decisions on them, but really start looking at them and digesting them and, and saying, yeah, this is something we could do, let's bring this to the board, let's, let's have these discussions at the board level so that it's not me talking, it's the board talking and making decisions based on what they want this to look like, knowing full well that none of those things can be finalized until after the strategic planning process. But is that something we could do as an example on the front end? Could buildings and property transition more to a referendum-focused committee, where they're really talking more in-depth about referendum and not just giving an update and making sure that that $27 million is spent properly? Those are just a couple of examples of what this could look like, but again, these are just suggestions, not recommendations. That'll turn it back over to you.
All right. Some of the feedback that I've gotten is, there is no set number of committees, there's not even a set number of board members that can be on a committee. It's all flexible. It's what the board wants and what the board or what the community needs. And not every committee, and most of the committees that they're found as a model don't meet every single month, because a lot of things, and they even said it too, is especially when you start getting into the strategic planning, we have outcomes and goals, and it's measurable, and things take time, there's not something to talk about every single month on that one topic that they're focused on. So you could meet quarterly on one, like, let's just call it an ad hoc committee, and you could have eight different committees, but they all meet at different times, or frequency rather, based on, you know, the scope of what they're, they're looking at. So would there be a buildings of property, a personnel, a curriculum, policy committees? No idea. No idea. It's whatever the outcomes are, they'll come from the process that they start January next year through the strategic planning. It can completely change, but in the interim, we can at least, I think, you know, if the board decides that they want to adopt some of these things, we can start having those conversations and start training ourselves to think, to think in that way, like in Mr. Board's example, buildings of property, do we just want to focus on how we're spending this $27.1 million, you know, and get, I'm sure Nicholas will be involved in some of the stuff, Brian maybe in a bigger detail, I don't know, no idea. But that would be, the goal here is to challenge how we've always done our committee meetings and focus on the value add, because talking to them, most all of what we do, they, it's day-to-day stuff, and we're not the experts, and they want to focus on what is it the community wants. So that's kind of the, the first steps here is, what do we want to be when we grow up? And I think there's some homework we can do in the interim, and we can practice and play with it. On here is just a few examples of what committees could focus on, not to say you couldn't look at the calendar in a glance and come to the meeting on Wednesday and say, you know what, this, I think would be a good topic that we could probably discuss in greater detail over several meetings. I don't know. But I think we want to keep it to one or two topics. One's probably best, to be honest with you, but two, if it's manageable, might be okay. But I think the goal here, and Mr. Board, correct me if I'm wrong, the goal here in outcome for this model would be, whatever we're working on should be done by January 1 of '26.
I think it would want to be done by January so that the board can not have committees that they have to be dedicated to, but that they can be directly involved in the strategic planning process when January hits. So they want to be involved in the committee meetings, the community meetings, I should say. I think it's important that the board be, be present and visible at those things, and so by scaling back on the committee meetings, that would allow them to do that. So I think they either have to be done by that time, or they would have to be okay with them not being done. with them not being done, right? You wouldn't want to be in the middle of something and then take a four-month break as we go through, because I do think it would be very important for the board to be visible and present and engaged in all of those community sessions, listening sessions, and I'm assuming they'll do some sort of SWOT analysis at those sessions, but I think it's important for them, the board, to be active participants. That doesn't mean you can't do both, right? It just means that if you do both, you're going to have more time dedication that you've got to make, and I think the strategic planning process would have to be the top priority.
And then one of the challenges that we're going to be faced is, this is shifting away from the way it's always been done, and change is not always easy. One of the concerns that I have is, I mentioned it when they were here, we've worked really hard at transparency, and my concern is that the community may perceive this as we're moving things from the public, from our committee meetings, even though we don't have public that comes to them, but it's still, they have that opportunity, and it's moving behind closed doors. So we're having our admin, which they're already doing the work, they're doing the work solely without having it presented to us as a committee, to us as a board. I don't necessarily disagree that that would really happen, but I can see that as a perception with the community that we're shifting away from allowing them to be a part of, and have firsthand knowledge of what we have going on in the board.
Is there a way that we could still preserve some of that? I mean, the committees don't necessarily have power per se in making recommendations that ultimately come to the board anyway. When our HR director's given exit interview information instead of going to the committee, could that just come to the board? Could there be a board report where each of those committee leads administratively can be giving that information? I'm just wondering if there's a way that it could still be, because we don't want to lose the transparency that we've worked so hard to try to gain, so.
And I guess I have not done any research on some areas, board meetings at all, to see what those look like.
Can't find them online, I mean, not in terms of a video, but we've talked about going, but we can't find them online or a video.
We've worked hard, as Brady mentioned, to get these meetings tightened up, and then if we have been bringing maybe more agenda line items to be able to have that transparency, that almost seems to defeat the purpose, that spending an hour at a committee meeting, an hour and a half or so it does, and then we just push that, and then also we're going two and a half, three hours at the board meeting, it's still the same time, it just happens to be in one night versus a couple. And I don't know what that looks like, I'm just...
The transparency and communication questions was asked to them a couple of times, and there was ways that they said that they addressed it, however, most of the community was engaged at that strategic planning level, the folks that were really engaged with what the district was doing were already a part of the school district as part of that process. And the goals and outcomes in that model is, and they've said it more than once, is we're not the experts, it is not our job to manage the day-to-day of the school district. If the CDC says wear a mask, wear a mask, doesn't need to have to come to the board. If banning cell phones from bell to bell is in the best interest of our goals and outcomes and our student learning, then ban the cell phones, like, those are all examples that they said, it doesn't go to the board, like, this day-to-day stuff, like, we should be focusing on what the community, our stakeholders, want the direction of the school district to go into. That was, that's really what their model is. Is it complete, is it completely shutting the doors of transparency? No, I don't think it is, it's redirecting your focus and your goals and outcomes is something different that, you know, in their mind, we should be focusing on, not just us, but other districts too. I know there's a big fear, trust me, I thought about the same thing, same things, we worked so hard to shorten meetings, we worked so hard to be transparent, we worked so hard to be honest, and I don't want to give that up either, but I'm also not afraid to take a risk, to take a chance, and continue to develop and grow this board.
I have a question, a little bit of a comment about the fear. So if our goals are informed by the community, number one, I think it's important for the board to consider additional opportunities for us to get community information outside of the plan that we're, there's no way, right? We're going to really get all the information that we could get by this proposed plan. This is a great way to do it, but there are a lot of people who are not going to attend this, who do not feel comfortable in open sessions, who have amazing ideas and valuable input. And so one of my wonders is, if you remember, early on, one of the things that they asked or they talked about was that the board members each were a part of some type of community organization, and they brought in information from that organization back to the board. Could we potentially think about that, just try a little mini-model between now and January, and that could be one of our committees, where we bring information from other outside connections that we have, all around the same information or ideas, right? We have to decide, what is it that we want to know? What do we need to know from these people that we're communicating with or meeting with, and we can all bring that information back. That would just be another way to gather some data, in addition to, of course, the beautiful plan that they have set up. And when our community speaks, we have to be ready for, to be surprised, we have to be ready to maybe not agree, and we have to, we have to be able to take that in and ask ourselves, why does that feel so, that doesn't feel so good, that the community is saying, this group of people is saying that, right? And we have to lean into it, and we have to want to know more about it. And the only way we're going to find that information is by asking more questions and spending more time with folks who are, have, you know, one way of thinking, maybe the opposite of somebody else. But I think those are valid things to consider, as if we really want to, I mean, we can go through the motions, there's a million models like this, right? I mean, this is not the first time I've seen something like this, I'm sure other people at the table have been through these types of strategic planning operations with different groups of people that lead it, this is very similar, and we think we have a responsibility to ask questions about what can we bring to the table, in addition, that'll help really strategically inform what the community wants for their schools. And maybe the committees, there was like a little term, I think they used, they created a word about committees that they were sitting at, do you remember what they were, I can't remember what they called it? But I sent up to be out of the booster club. I have to report back to the booster club.
This is not something we have to decide on tonight, we can absolutely postpone this, I don't want to force people into thinking that you have to make a decision with this tonight, it's totally fine if it's postponed. Mr. Borden, are you buying that?
I'm, this is the meeting of the board, as they said, right?
Yep, that's right.
This is the direction of the boards.
One of the initial thoughts that I had was, if we are looking at, we're going to be doing the strategic planning, which we won't really have the results until June, July, and if we're looking at changing how we're operating in the meantime, we could end up going this direction thinking it's great, and the strategic planning says we should go this direction, and we've spent all this time and change going one way, when really we needed to follow and flow to fit in with the strategic plan results. So I'm not sure if it makes sense to really, to do both simultaneously, or take some smaller steps and we can start talking about them, whether it's at the committee level or whatever, because I think a lot of the things we do, when we look at the schedule at the glance, we might be able to accelerate some of that work so that we're not doing the overlaps, we might be able to get it so that the committees still do what they're doing, but when it gets to the January through June, that we condense that, so that instead of meeting every month, maybe it's every other month, something like that as well.
So it's, it absolutely will change as far as what the focus is on, but as far as the model itself, there wouldn't be much change. It's, rather than having a 10,000-foot view and trying to tackle 50 things over the next couple of months, is spend 15 minutes doing it, focus on one thing that has a lot of value, is measurable, that one thing, and get down into the weeds and focus on that, because ultimately, that's what strategic planning model is in the end. So while the focus might change and will change, how we get there, it wouldn't change that much, that's the feedback that I've gotten anyways, and Mr. Borden, you've been in communications with them too, is that how you have been hearing it?
Yeah, I, if the board is even interested in this kind of a model, I think the idea would be tiptoe into the committee level based on what the committees we have right now, I can, the examples that I put here, buildings and property, just focused on referendum and concession stand, right? And just really spent more time on that and not on a vehicle spec or what tires we're going to put on the maintenance truck, you know, but just focused on those things. Even if the strategic plan did say, we don't care about this, we want to go in this direction, that could still happen, it would just be more of this idea of, let's get our agendas down to one or two topics that really have the most value, and just see what that looks like, and do we feel like we're missing things? And if we are, are they important? Do our community feel that they're important? And if they are, how can we still get them in? Does it have to come straight to the board? Or are they really just time suckers? And we could spend more time talking about the AGR data and curriculum, you know, and more time focusing on how we're spending our money with budget and personnel and budget development, and more time on the referendum and concession stand with buildings and property, and I'm missing one committee, but you get the idea, right? Spend more time on one or two topics as opposed to less time on a lot, and it could still ebb and flow as the strategic plan comes about, that's, that would be kind of the idea of this tiptoeing, but again, I mean, it really is what you want to have under your jurisdiction regards to the committees.
Can I ask a question?
It's the meeting of the board.
I guess I'm a little confused with the thought of how it's not being transparent with the community, when we're going to involve the community more, and we're trying to get them all, you know, like, all involved with this strategic planning thing, and you're bringing in the community and getting out to the community, and like Mr. Sharp said, you know, being part of commit, or being part of the groups, and one thing I remember they had mentioned was, you know, sit down with the city administrator, sit down with, you know, whoever, just go have a talk with them, get to know them. I don't see how that would be cutting back on being transparent with the community if we're trying to involve them more, so that, I guess I'm not understanding where you think that that's not going to be transparent.
I guess it's just because we've always shared so much information this side going out to the community, and with the strategic planning, it's the community telling us what they want us to do, and then obviously, how do we get there? How do we do that? I think that's the piece that might end up being perceived as not being transparent, because we've always had, shared with them, or given them the opportunity anyway, to know kind of the hows and whys for doing things. And if we're pulling those and shifting and following what they want us to do and what they would like to see, I don't know if they're going to perceive that as, hey, they're hiding how they're getting there, because, you know, the ends justify the means, we might not be doing the right things to get to the right end. So that's, I personally don't know that there's, would be that, but it's just a concern that's kind of been rolling in my head when all of a sudden you say, hey, we're not going to do this piece anymore that we've been doing since the beginning of time, probably.
I was there.
So that's the transparency concern that I have, is that because, you know, people can log in, and obviously we don't necessarily have a lot to come, but just that perception, because there's always going to be people that, no matter how much you try to do the best thing for the community, best thing for the kids, they're always going to find an excuse to come after people.
Do we really know what the community wants to know? I mean, have we ever asked the community if, what is it exactly you want to know? What can we be more transparent around? What are your values? What do you need to know? Is what we're giving you now the information you need to feel confident and safe and secure in our district? If it is, what is it? And if it is not, what should it be?
And also, one of their comments was, your action items list might get smaller, but your consent agenda is going to grow, but all this information is still online, still in the board books, it's still there, whether it's an action item or consent or not, the information still gets to the public. And I think if we all looked at the action items, a lot of the times, there's not really much to say, we just go right to a vote and it's done, so, yeah, I'm not, I understand the transparency part too, it's one of my biggest fears, but to your point, we don't know what we don't know. I think when you go down that road and engage them, and you find out what they want, they're probably going to say, keep students in the school, fix open enrollment, get test scores up, you know, it's going to be a very small subset of items that are going to be what the primary focus is for goals and outcomes, and that's what's going to define what these committees truly look like. And all the busy things that we use to fill time are going to go to consent. Especially the ones that are, you know, legally, we have no say in it, so why it comes to the board for action is beyond me to begin with, it should just go to consent. I mean, if you're legally bound by state law, federal law, or whatever, you don't have a choice in the matter, just go to consent anyways instead of going to action, whether it's school lunch programs, or WIA, or whatever, just go to consent regardless. There's nothing to talk about, nothing we can do about it.
I must say for myself, I attend a lot of meetings, and before I got on the board, I would look around and say, wow, you know, how come somebody from the school board isn't here, or somebody from administration, you know, that type of thing, and because I think it's very important to show that we care. And I think after I got on the board, then I could see sometimes why they weren't there, because, you know, you have a lot of meetings and things, but I do think it's, that it's important to the public that we show up and that we are listening, and we see them, and we care. And I think that's going to get across more than anything to the public, is that we do hear you and we do see you, and, you know, not everything can be perfect, but I just look at how many changes we've made and, you know, just trying to always improve. look at how many changes we've made, and, you know, just trying to always improve, and, you know, we're all doing our very best. But that's, that's my feeling.
Yeah, I think, if I recall, part of their reasoning for board members to be involved in the organization was to solicit feedback from those groups, those public groups, to hear what their concerns are, but then also communicate to those groups what the school district is doing. So the forms of communication and transparency are there, it just, it might look and feel Whether it's a larger consent agenda, or everybody getting more public, communication methods will be there.
More recordings of reports, something that they used, I think, available for everybody, not just tonight, but at any time, maybe more so than committees in some ways.
Yeah, good point. They did say that they used video recordings a lot for, for their board meetings, which I assume would apply to the consent agenda. You can do it for that, too, can you?
Do what for consent agenda?
If you wanted more information, I'm assuming you could put a recording.
To add a report into something that's on consent, absolutely.
Absolutely. So there's options, it just might look and feel different.
So where would the board like to go? Need more time to think, have the committees look on Wednesday and say, "These are some things that we really don't need to bring, these things could go straight to the board, focus on some of the high-level things, and try to pick them now."
I kind of think that we should talk about it at our committee meeting, kind of, you know, regroup a little bit, let us process this, and then come back with some, some thoughts. That's my, my thought.
And so, under that model, Ms. Traxley, would each committee would, first of all, we would make sure that there's time on the agenda, but allocate a certain amount of time for the committee to just talk about, "Here are all the things we look at, maybe look at that schedule at a glance, here are all the things we do, what would this look like under this model," and just have that discussion at a committee level.
I think that's a good place to start, and then...
For each of the committees.
Yeah, for each of the committees, and then just, you know, come back to the board and, you know, let's decide, you know, what everyone feels. I mean, I guess that's my thought, but I don't know what everyone else thinks.
I think that's a great, the schedule at a glance will help us kind of figure out our threshold, or oversight, right? So like you, like we've been talking, there are some things that we don't need to get involved with. They're, they're just, they're items where we need to support our trust in the people that we've hired to do the job and do the job, right? But the threshold, we might be able to play around a little bit more about, what is that threshold? How's that feel for this board? Which might inform policy in the long run. So if we can just practice a little bit about, you know, like, take a look at the, at a glance, figure out what are our top items, prioritize those items, and see if we can live without some of the other things, that might just be a place to start.
Well, I too, like I think on building a property, you know, what might be top of the line for Brady, or what might be for Brian, what might be for me, then we can kind of, you know, kind of come together and come up with an answer, and then come back to the board. That gives them an opportunity to work together, and same with policy, that we can kind of figure out, you know, rather than try to make a, you know, rush decision, let's, let's talk it over and see what we feel would be the best for, you know, not only for the board, but for the public, and, you know, that type of thing.
Mr. Board, with the committees and the work that I know that the administrators do to bring information to each committee, how much shift do you think there would be in, in time and work for the administrators to essentially do 100% of that work? Instead of just putting it together and bringing it to the committee, and then having the committee talk through whatever points it might be in there, versus having it ready to go, that will bring it straight to the board? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I don't think that it would really require any additional work, it's just, you know, because it's going to be done going, as if it gets presented to the committee anyway, and then a lot of that is, is just, sometimes it's a, it's a, you know, dress rehearsal for something, like what kind of questions are going to be brought up, and so that when it comes to the board, those questions can be, can be answered in advance or prepared for. Sometimes it's looking to get three board members' blessing on what that looks like before it goes to the full board. And sometimes it's truly just information that the committee is just absorbing and digesting and reacting to. So any of those things, I don't know that it really necessarily changes. I think they can all ultimately end up at the, at the board as needed, but it don't really saves any time or subtracts any time, it just, the flow looks a little different, I think is probably all going to be.
Just knowing, like, when we went through the transition to go to Neola, that we spent a lot of time going through, after you had gone through and done work, Mr. Bosworth had done work on it, to where we see different things. So I guess I'm just wondering how that piece of that puzzle, and obviously, that big transition's over, but if we would have something like that again, hey, we need to revamp all of our position descriptions, which not through that, or anything, but things like that where it might end up being a heavier lift that we're able to bring to a committee level, and spread that work out a little bit.
Yeah. Yeah, I certainly understand what you're saying. It feels like we're over the hump with the vast majority of those things, right? We now live in the Neola world, Neola updates and policy updates happen a couple of times a year. Those are relatively painless at the committee level anymore. You know, it feels like we're now caught up on job descriptions and those kinds of things, so, yeah, I don't know that I would see this being as heavy as, as the Neola. Even if you were to take on the, the policy governance, you know, because you'd have to write those, right? The board as a whole would have to write those. But the Neola policies, I mean, there are, I don't know, I think there are 650 policies, you know? I mean, I think they said they had 40, right? So, I mean, it's much more pared down in terms of what's, I mean, obviously, that's a lot of work that the seven of you would have to put in, right? What, what are we going to do with this policy? How does that look? It would not be administrative recommendations, unlike Neola, where John and I and our administrative team could provide a lot of recommendations, because those, that's what we live in day-to-day, right? These would be board policies, what the board would have to weigh in on. So that piece, I think, would put more work on the board, if you got to that level of governance. The rest of it, I don't really see as it being a huge difference one way or another. What would the board think about if, because administration will have to prepare for Wednesday, what if we took an approach for Wednesday of paring down for Wednesday night, the absolute necessities that have to be done because of time sensitivity, right? And for, and tentatively pushing everything else back to September, and we'll see what happens with September, but then allowing the board a good chunk of time, you know, I'm talking like a half hour, to really go through, and maybe I would suggest the board, the committees, look at two different things, like what would this look like if we got rid of only the essentials at the committee level? And then what would it look like if we had to focus on one thing? Right? And if, if administratively, we could pare down the agenda so that we got rid of all of the fluff for Wednesday, right? The BPT's still got to meet at 5:30 and look at the concession stand, and they're still going to have to have a referendum update, but, you know, anything else that can be pushed back gets pushed back at each of those committees, and then task each committee with something like, what would the essentials look like, and what would it look like if we only focused on one? And then bring all of that back to the board on the, at the next board meeting, and have a discussion then, okay, this is what it would look like. We can't get rid of these things because it's essential. Or, you know what, maybe if we did just focus on this thing, that would be okay. I don't know, that's just a suggestion. Thoughts?
Final to that?
I think it would be a start. We can hear everybody yell.
I guess with that, we need to have the administrators say, "These, these are the things that they feel need to come with the committee," and the committee can say, "Well, what if?" You know, so it's a conversation back and forth. Because I don't necessarily know the things that are brought in front of the two committees that I'm on, which ones are, well, have we always just done it this way? Or it's, hey, we really want your input, because we've never discussed it that way before.
That's exactly what I would say, too. I think we have administrators have a, a little bit of a voice here, of what, first of all, I'd like them to tell us what they believe that the priorities should be for us. I think they should, I want, I would love to know that. And secondly, you know, if there's anything that they would like our input on in ways outside of already established procedures, I'd like to know that as well.
Got three of the five folks that are involved in the committees, is it, you know, you folks understand what we're trying to do for Wednesday? Is that reasonable? Do you have questions on what our ask is? Or what their ask is of us, I'm sure?
As one example, can I ask?
There's love.
So for example, so if, if, let's say we decided to switch to the type of governance model we're talking about, and the board really focuses more on policy and, and decision-making based around the priorities they've identified, then what do things like, something on our curriculum agenda coming up is the decision about new clubs? So that usually comes, and you decide on this, so if that's not tied to whatever your priority is, then that's not something you weigh in on, because the administrators would then manage that and make that decision. So we haven't done the process yet, so that can't really be determined. However, like for this, it's on our agenda for curriculum, and possibly for another. So is that a priority? It's a timeline, for sure, but is that something that you need to do? Is that in our policy? I don't, I don't know that. So I guess that's one kind of clarification, and an example I thought maybe might help identify why some shifts could help, or maybe not help.
In the end, I think, if I heard those folks correctly, I'm looking over at Brenda, but it's, because that's where they were sitting. The board can keep or release as much jurisdiction in any given area as they want, right? So if they're going through these things at a committee level, and the board says, "I don't care what we do, we're going to keep clubs under our jurisdiction," then that would just stay under their jurisdiction. I think going through this process at the committee level, administrative and board collaboratively on Wednesday, might help both groups identify a little bit of what, what things could be, it could help shape us down the road, and what we're, what we're trying to keep or...
I could be mistaken, but I think our policy states that the board approves committee or clubs, and so...
It's whatever our policy states is how we got to continue doing it, but ultimately, the way that they, their policies are written, those 40, or so, I can't remember if it was 40 or 60, it was somewhere in that range, those policies, those board policies, that's like their bible. That's what they choose to take action on. Everything else, like the 601s that you're talking about, those would be administrative, staff, just the day-to-day stuff, you deal with it, you manage it. But those board-specific policies are basically what determine what, you know, what we're going to talk about, or take action on.
And the 601s would be revised accordingly to reflect that.
Correct, because right now, our, our own policies are, is what is tying us down on a lot of stuff.
We're a lot better than we were.
But we are a lot better than we were.
John, you got a question?
We have a more comment, if that's okay. It's my understanding that this, this shift, which makes people nervous, right, because it's changed, and it feels like, well, we're going to, you know, administrators are going to make a poor decision, and we're going to have to deal with it. I think what we're talking about here is, Aaron is saying, we need to figure out what are the really big things our committee want us to address, and then we need to spend our time on that. However, the other stuff typically happens, that either stays as a policy, or becomes an administrative guideline, and we put that sort of stuff on cruise control, and we write our policies so that it's always going to happen inside of these parameters, and we can live inside of those parameters. Now administrators go do this stuff, but stay inside of these, these...
Guardrails.
Guardrails, thank you. And then, and then if, if transparency is part of it, well, that can be part of the policy, too. Every X number of days or months, this will be reported as this, and it can still look the same, but the heavy work that goes into the policy work that you have potentially in front of you is to make that shift, and put a bunch of stuff on cruise control inside of the guardrails, so that you have time to focus on the big things, which you don't know what they are yet. And that's why you need to do that strategic planning process.
Yes.
Yeah.
And, and to be fair, those, you know, to say they have 40 board policies, that, that's, that's what they live and breathe under, I guarantee you that they don't stay the same, I guarantee you they change as the strategic planning changes. You know, if a focus shifts somewhere else, we need to change your policy. You know, those guardrails might change, it's like, oh, well, we got to change this because this is what they're asking for, and in order for us to follow suit with, you know, their expectations, we're going to have to modify our 40 policies and change them. And also, modify administrative policy as well, because the guardrails have changed. It's exactly it.
I guess I just want a clarification. Right now, we have our policies that work through with Neola. Are those policies, so that's the, the school district's policies, and are we looking at another set, a subset that is 40 new, potentially new, board-driven policy? We're not looking at changing our policies as they stand per se necessarily, we're looking at adding guidance for this, is that, I just want to make sure that...
My understanding...
We're all on the same page.
The old ones generally stay, may need to be revised a little bit to reflect what those 40 say, but the meat and potatoes of them stay.
Okay, that's what I thought, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, we're not going to do all the work that's required. That, that's not, that, that is a non-negotiable.
Yeah, in reality, we use those policies to guide us administratively every day, literally every day, we're looking at policy to, so they are a good set of rules for us to follow.
I feel like we're at a really good place when it comes to procedures and infrastructure, if you will, around decision-making for the district, even tonight. So that, are the decision that we made to move with that, what's it called, what's the company's?
McKinstry.
McKinstry. That, that is a peace of mind for community members, knowing that there is a very detailed log of assets, and, and a strategic way to identify when those assets need to be addressed. In a lot of board policy was created in the absence of the technology we have today that can do those types of robust, that kind of robust thinking. So curriculum is one of them, right? That's a big deal, and there's a ton of things that have gone in curriculum. There's a million different resources that now we have, that we didn't have when policies were first created around curriculum, right? Like, so if we think about where technology's... Like, so, if we think about where technology's taken us, we're still holding on to some of these, you know, minute little details that can be addressed confidently with outside resources, inside infrastructures, things that we already have set up. So, we can really focus on making sure our kids get what they need when they need it, and seeing the data that we want to see move, move. And we can put our thumb on exactly what we want to see move. Instead of talk about, you know, who's going to plow. And don't get me wrong, I value, I value the process, right? Of making sure that we're locally asking people to come and, you know, bid things out, and we're doing our due diligence to be, to be respectful of the money that is coming from our community, and there is processes for those. And we, right, within those parameters that we give, you stay in the guardrails, and we trust you're doing it correctly.
So, are we good with rolling with the proposal then to, for Wednesday? Then postponing this till next meeting?
And if I'm hearing that correctly, what you need from the administration is to put together the policy agendas with the time-sensitive must-have things that we have to do for this Wednesday, and then to allow the rest of the time for the board and the administration to work collaboratively, or the committees and the administration work collaboratively, to identify what are the essentials, and if we had to trim it down to one, what would that be? As a starting point. Not, nobody's locked into anything, but as a starting point, conversational piece. And everything that's not time-sensitive, for the time being, will get pushed back to September's or October's committee meetings until we determine what direction the committees are going. Is that, is that accurate? So, we will determine the must-haves, and then we'll be prepared on Wednesday to have conversation with the committees on what that, whether what are the essentials, and we had to pick one, what would it be? Fair? And so, that's what you're asking them to, okay.
John up.
Good with all of you?
I haven't sat in a committee meeting yet, so...
So, we're all of that. All right, good discussion, appreciate it. Everybody, I really do.
And this is on the agenda, under this topic, I should say, but doesn't necessarily specifically have to relate to strategic planning or committees. But we had a couple of meetings on Wednesday to, to reflect the schedules of the folks from the Evergreen Leadership Group, so it was brought up, so it's just here for discussion, possible action if you want to, to possibly look at moving board meetings and committee meetings to Wednesday nights, just to ensure that there's no conflicts with anything going on Mondays, and especially in the spring, when a lot of things get rescheduled. Understanding that some folks have made some adjustments and had some waivers already for Wednesday nights, we'd have tried to recruit those groups to, it might be a little bumpy at first, but anyway, it was brought up as a suggestion. I believe one person said possibly committee meetings on the first Wednesday, board meetings on the second and fourth. But again, it's just here, just, that's what I'm going to introduce it as. I'll turn it back to you, so. Anything to add or thoughts?
Not really any additional thoughts, is, would that be an absolute not able to do it for anybody?
Just historically, we've not done anything on Wednesdays, because it was in the beginning of time when I was there. It was presented as a family night for people, church night, stuff like that. So, we typically have not ever done anything on a Wednesday night.
I have another board meeting that I do on the second Wednesday currently right now. That, I was going to possibly present to that board about moving that to like a Tuesday or Thursday, but currently, right now, my second Wednesday is the township board.
And that's the committee meeting night currently?
Yeah, so if it were the first Wednesday, that's great.
Then the board meeting would be the second?
But then the board meeting would be, yeah.
Well, we can wait for that part of it.
Yeah, in two days, I'll know if we can get it moved.
Anybody else use it an absolute no-go to go to that cadence?
I'm good. Can you tell me a little bit more about the Wednesday night? I just want to know a little bit more about the history there.
That's always the way it was presented. It was always, like athletic events were not scheduled Wednesday nights, band, choir, none of that was Wednesday night, so it was always presented as a family night.
That's why school activities have to be done by 7 o'clock on Wednesday, because that was traditionally CCD and those kinds of things with youth groups and churches.
Right, and it still is. I mean, kind of a rule in my, was correct in saying that? Yeah, okay. And because it's a public meeting, and because, you know, families could come, that's why it would be, what other night would be better? And without any conflicts?
None. Wednesday is the one night. Like, there's, there's times where board members go to a choir concert on Monday night, or administration is in and out, or other board members are in and out for whatever, concerts, sports. Monday night can be really conflicting for folks, which is why the Wednesday was brought up, it's like, there's nothing else going on. So, would Wednesdays work best for everybody to be able to attend things on, let's say, Monday nights? Knowing you're obviously going to have a Wednesday night.
Now that we have the board meetings videotaped, do you think that helps a little bit, so people have access?
It wasn't about people having access, it was about people...
On the board being timed, having time with their family?
Oh, anybody, there's never been anything said that you have to be at a board meeting. You know, if you've got a family member, relative, whatever, at any event, by all means, go to it.
But if four out of the seven can't be there on Wednesday, then...
Then it could cause problems.
Then we wouldn't have a meeting.
Any night, really.
Right, yep. Or if there's, anytime that we can't have forum because there's conflicts, that could create a problem. So, if it's a one-off, that's different than if it's, I cannot do, if you have a commitment already, then...
Right.
Glad we're missing one for two things every month. To where if there was a conflict with, let's say, a choir concert or whatever, you know, you'd miss a one board meeting once.
And we do try to initially schedule nothing on board meeting levels, right? All of our people are told that, but again, in the spring, I know that they do get, a lot of things get rescheduled, just because of weather, and Mondays do end up getting used, you know, if you like the idea of Wednesday, but it is a conflict on the second, you know, you could go to a first and third meetings, regularly scheduled meetings, and the fourth Monday, or the fourth Wednesday is committees. I mean, you could structure it so that the second is, is free as well, so...
And like I said, I'm going to bring it to the board on Wednesday about moving our township meetings to like a Tuesday or Thursday, see if there's any conflict there with them, and if there isn't, then we can move it, then it would be perfectly all right. We can either go to second, fourth Wednesdays, or whatever, move it all Wednesdays. But right now, that is my own conflict.
Hold off for now, postponing?
Disponent, revisit it, next board meeting.
Get folks to check and think about it, too. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Mr. Roxley, a second.
A second.
Second, and Mrs. Thompson, discussion. Mrs. Sherb.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye. Thank you.